Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The point of inquiry was answered, so I have no further comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Senator Yamashita, did you wish to speak? Senator Uggan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Good afternoon to you and our colleagues. Just something that was brought to my attention, Mr. Speaker, in terms of the clarification with regards to grant slash loan that I had proposed as an amendment. The good sponsor of the amendment had clarified that, in fact, that particular home assistance program is a program that was previously established to augment some of the requirements by first-time homeowners. So it's really a grant program that would provide up to $10,000 to families to help assist, not only with the down payment, but perhaps with some other requirements in terms of acquiring their first-time home. So knowing that that would directly reference to that program, I certainly, Mr. Speaker, would like to request that we go back to the original proposal by the sponsor of the amendment, and that is just to keep the word "grant" rather than to insert the word "loan." So on that amendment, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Any objections to that? Anybody else on the main -- we're back to the main motion now, aren't we? So have we resolved that? Just grants. Is that clear where the clerks are? Okay. And who's?
The main motion.
Senator Uggan, I think you were the last -- did you want to speak on the main motion?
I was the last one. Senator, you were the last one.
No, I think he did. Okay. I'll just make one last request. Anybody who wants to speak on the main motion, otherwise I'll allow the main sponsor -- any other amendments? The main sponsor's recognized.
Thank you.
Senator Uggan, you're recognized.
Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker, and to our fellow colleagues. Thank you very much. I'm sorry I was expecting the discussion on this particular measure shortly after one of the other pieces of legislation. But, Mr. Speaker, I would like to, first of all, thank, you know, all of our colleagues on the floor who has deliberated and debated and maybe have withdrawn or what have you. But I have to say that, you know, our colleague from Timuny, basically in her testimony on the main motion, basically said that when all of the members come together to deliberate on a bill, it's always, of course, to make the bill a better bill and to benefit those that the bill was designed to do. And that's very true in this particular case. And we've seen how it had evolved from where we thought, you know, was going to be so contentious yesterday to something that is now more amicable and much more appealing. And I think to -- and that what everyone really wanted to see happen, you know, we're hoping that it would do just that. And so it's not just giving everything all away, because as you saw and heard and the amendment being passed is that, you know, we're going to require that whatever monies that are being put in, that the corporation will work very hard to make sure that then the monies will go to these first homeowners, first-time homeowners. And if not, of course, and they can't do diligence and show that they're able to do just that, then yes, they would revert back to the general fund. And so, you know, everyone here has their hearts all in the right place, and I'm very proud to say that I'm proud to be a part, of course, of, you know, this group of our colleagues here, and I want to thank them very much. And I don't want to continue to talk much about the bill, but I would like to just close by adding some individuals on the sponsorship list. And, you know, in many discussions prior to this, but trying to get the bill out in a timely manner, I've filed it basically by myself, but in discussions with our colleagues, there is the assurance, of course, is that, you know, and they have recognized themselves as co-sponsors, and I'd just like to memorialize this by making the amendments. So I would like to add Senator Munia Barnes, Senator Lina Yamashita, Senator Tom Ada, and by the way, happy birthday, Senator Tom Ada, Senator Respecho, and Senator Duñez. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
There being no objection? On the motion to send the Bill 79 down, no objection. Bill 96. Senator Uggan, you're recognized.
Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker, and to our fellow colleagues. Thank you very much. I'm sorry I was expecting the discussion on this particular measure shortly after one of the other pieces of legislation. But, Mr. Speaker, I would like to thank the chair once again for reporting this particular measure out, and it's Bill Number 96 S-32COR. I'd like to move that this particular legislation be placed in the third reading file for consideration by members of this body.
And would you like to speak on it? Yourself. No, yourself. You are going to speak, right?
Briefly.
At least tell us about it.
Yes, with a brief discussion, please, Madam Speaker.
Okay. So you may proceed, Senator.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to, like I just shared with you, thank the good Senator Munia Barnes, as well as Vice Speaker Cruz for co-sponsoring this particular legislation. You know, when the committee with oversight over the Hagatna Restoration Authority apparently had a roundtable discussion, one of the recommendations that originated from the Department of Tomorrow Affairs and their representatives was to see what they can do to increase the representation on this board. And one of the distinguishing factors at that time during the discussion was why the Hagatna mayor was not mentioned as a member of this particular board, which has overreaching, or I could say even far-reaching authority, as it applies to the redevelopment and the overall master planning of the Hagatna area. So, Madam Speaker, this is a direct result of that particular discussion. Also, in addition to that, if you take a look at the Hagatna Restoration Authority and some of the provisions in which it has in carrying out its responsibilities, Madam Speaker, it, in some cases, consolidates responsibilities that are within the jurisdictions of three or four government of Guam agencies into this board. And because of that, I felt that it was necessary that in addition to including the Hagatna mayor, if by any chance, with the support of our colleagues, we could include a representative to be appointed by the Speaker of the Guam Legislature to ensure that there is representation from the policymaking perspective in terms of the activities and the decisions that are rendered by this authority. One of the issues that I brought to the attention of our legal counsel was, would there be any separation of powers issues? And I wanted to bring this up in the conversation, because realistically, if you have an authority like this, and supposedly it's supposed to be carrying out executive branch authority, then that question always comes into play. And I don't want to offset the responsibility and the nature of the executive branch versus the policy. But like I said, Madam Speaker, if you really take a look at the legislation that established this many, many years ago, and by the way, the name of this, the namesake of this legislative session hall was the sponsor of this legislation, and I certainly recognize him and congratulate him for having the foresight in terms of looking at the Hagatna area and requiring that perhaps the creation of an entity that would be focused on the redevelopment of Hagatna would be very critical in terms of highlighting the capital city of Guam. Well, Madam Speaker, because of that, I felt it was necessary that we possibly look at incorporating at least a representative to be appointed by the Speaker of the Guam Legislature to sit on this particular board. Another issue that was brought up during the course of the public hearing, Madam Speaker, was why would we want to increase the representation of the board from seven to nine? And this is how I looked at it. When formulating legislation, you certainly don't want to take away anything that's already in the proposal, with due respect to the original sponsor of that legislation, and also with due respect to the executive branch. Because right now, the Hagatna Restoration Authority has seven appointed members, requires seven appointed members, of which four positions are presently filled. During the public hearing, it was shared with members of the legislature at that time and the committee that there were two other individuals, two other names, that were going to be submitted very shortly to be nominated, as well as possibly be confirmed by this body, to sit on the Hagatna Restoration Authority. But despite that, I did not want to take away from the seven possible representation from the chief executive in considering expanding the membership on this particular board. So if you're looking at the explanation, why do we go from seven to nine? It's primarily because of that, to ensure that the chief executive still has that appointing authority of no less than seven members on this board. Why did we include the Hagatna mayor? Because rightfully so. He, at this point in time, because it's Mayor Cruz, he rightfully was selected and elected by his constituents here in Hagatna. And obviously, any changes or any adoption of master plan should incorporate the mayor of Hagatna. And then also moving to that explanation that I just shared with you in terms of the legislative representative. Madam Speaker, one of the things that this legislation also provides, it expands the representation on the inclusion of executive branch agencies. If you look at the proposal, the law today, it includes the Department of Land Management, the Guam Preservation Trust, obviously, the Chamor Language Commission, the Parks and Recreation, and MARC, the Microniche Area, the Richard F. Titano Microniche Area Research Center. But it did not include the Department of Public Works, and it did not include the Guam Environmental Protection Agency. Any master plan that is adopted as a result of the authority provided under this law, rightfully should include those agencies, because Hagatna, to a great extent, has been identified as a flood zone. That being the case, Public Works, as well as Guam EPA, have the expertise in terms of making sure that any master plan that's eventually adopted by the Hagatna Restoration Authority, approved by the chief executive, forwarded to the legislative branch for consideration, certainly has some input from these particular agencies. So, Madam Speaker, with your consideration and the consideration of our members in this body, I'd like to ask for their support in the passage, eventual passage of public law 90, I mean, Bill Number 96 S-32. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion? Senator Munia Barnes, you're recognized.
I do promise to be real brief, Madam Speaker. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and rise in support of Bill 96 S-32COR. I just want to say that when we were at the public hearing, the roundtable hearing for the Hagatna redevelopment and the Hagatna Restoration and Redevelopment Authority, the stakeholders at that meeting did bring the concerns and the need for the disciplines or the representation from the mayor, and also to include the, to include this august body in it, and more importantly, so to work with the agencies who will have direct dealings to what will be needed to restore, or to renovate, or to refurbish, or to reconstruct. So I do want to say I stand and rise in full support. I want to thank all the stakeholders who came to the table, more importantly, inclusive of the director of the Hagatna Restoration and Redevelopment Authority, Mr. Cameron, who, he and his team shared a presentation of what's been happening here in Hagatna and what progresses have been made today, and what programs and what facilities are being worked on today. So my thank yous to them, and I want to share, as we move forward in really realizing what Hagatna was, the way we used to see it, or the way our parents saw it back before World War II, is something that we should bring back to full fruition. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak in support of the bill.
You're welcome. Senator on the motion? Senator Yamashita, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for allowing me the opportunities to speak on Bill Number 96 dash 32. Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of this measure. I think we all know that there's a revitalization that's happening, that's being planned for, and so this is a continued effort to give that kind of support that's needed, a continued effort to make sure those who are needed to be at the table are at the table. And we see the plans. We broke for the museum. We see other businesses opening, but we also see businesses closing. And so that's just as important to study and to see why they're not able to stay open. And so I'm hoping this authority looks at that. We see the Manuel F. Velcararo building, and we know that that really needs to be addressed. And of course, our own building. So this is all a part of our capital, and it's all exciting. Madam Speaker, I do have an amendment to make, and it could be that it's going to make the non-voting ex-official member list too big, but I would like to proffer it for discussion purposes. On page three, line seven, Madam Speaker, I would like to add the two agency directors be included in this ex-official member list, and that would be the Department, I mean, the Guam Visitors Bureau and DISIT, the Department of Integrated Services of Individuals with Disabilities. Madam Speaker, the reason why I ask that we include GBB and DISIT is because most certainly the GBB business the GBB business is bringing our visitors to our island, and I think they would be able to help the conversation be full and robust about what our visitors are looking for, how they would like to spend their money, and what kind of customer services needed to meet their particular, their particular set. And I think that would help them. I ask that DISIT be included because I think it's an opportunity to ensure that accessibility is ensured. Too often, people will say, "We don't have the money to make sure that there are sidewalks or elevators or ramps." And I want to make sure that there's somebody at the table who always says, "We cannot not afford it." And so, Madam Speaker, I ask for the consideration of adding those two directors to this authority. And that would be the Director of GBB and the Director of DISIT.
Thank you very much. But Senator, maybe because if you read the top, line three, where it's "Non-voting ex-official members shall include representatives from," oh, there'll be representatives from GBB and DISIT, or you want specifically directors? Okay, so representatives. So on the amendment, then, to include representatives from GBB and DISIT, Senator Ogden, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I'd like to certainly thank the good, our good colleague for proffering the inclusion of GBB and DISIT. And you know, Madam Speaker, when you really think about it, despite her excellent explanation in terms of why GBB should be incorporated in this process, and then that also the Department of Integrated Services for Individuals with Disabilities be incorporated into this, it's an extremely opportune time for this amendment to be made, only because the master plan has yet to be formalized. It's still in the process of being reviewed. Eventually, will be approved by the chief executive, forwarded to the legislature for consideration. And it's at that stage, or at that phase of consideration of master plans, where these agencies really would be critical in terms of reinforcing and ensuring that concerns for individuals with disabilities are taken into consideration, and that also the beautification and the enhancement of Hagatna as our capital city be taken into consideration, so that it complements what the Guam Visitors Bureau is presently doing in terms of encouraging and enticing many of our visitors to Guam. So I certainly stand in support of the amendment, and I commend and I thank the sponsor of the amendment for proffering it. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Yes, I would like to speak on the amendment, and I wholeheartedly support the amendment. And I think what's really very important about this, and it reminds me of a discussion that I had at one time, long time ago, with the former Oversight Chair of Tourism, GBB. And at that time, of course, we were new, and we wanted to expand tourism out of Tumon and into the community, so there'll be this community buy-in. And that, can you imagine, of course, an island where everyone in the community embraces this whole idea of tourists coming to the island, but people were always feeling that it's just always on Tumon. And of course, one of the first bills that came out of that was to try to incorporate, then, the southern villages. But here we now, we are with the Hagatna Redevelopment, Restoration and Redevelopment Authority, whatever they're called. But, but the idea is, because it is our capital, and everywhere you go, as you travel, the capital is always emphasized, and, and that's where the tourists want to go. And we're going to have a museum here, we're going to fix up, of course, the plaza, and then, of course, we have the legislature next door as well. And then there are other plans that are being, are currently being worked on. We have this red brick steps that will lead you from Government House all the way down here. And because this is, it's new, it's developing, what better place than Hagatna to be able to bring in GBB and to bring tourism into Hagatna? And what better place, now when we're starting to develop this, and we're going to put up sidewalks, that we really make it very friendly for individuals with disabilities? And, you know, maybe in some other places that we were doing a hot pot of development, that it might be a little bit more difficult to even put sidewalks in some of these places, but in Hagatna, I think that that's the most ideal, and that's why, you know, I really believe, and I'm excited about this, two particular, you know, entities to be included. And as large as it is, it's quite all right, because I think we want to be all inclusive, to get everybody in our community to buy into this idea, and so, and by doing so, then it just makes it very successful. So thank you very much for that amendment, Senator, and thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, for letting me speak.
On the Yamashita Amendment, anybody wish to speak? Senator Munia Barnes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I too rise in full support of the Yamashita Amendment. I think this is really good. As, as we look at tourism being 60% of Guam's economic driver, I think it's important that, as we look at this restoration for Hagatna and the vision of including the next village down, I think that GBB needs to be a part of that stakeholding membership, so that they too can see what it takes to work closely with the membership to move forward in all the restoration and redevelopment that Guam needs to see as we continue to promote Guam as a first-class, number-one destination for all else around the world to see. So I stand in full support of the amendment, and I thank the good author for thinking of a very wise one. So Senator Massey.
Thank you. So on the, on the amendment, which is to include representative from GBB and DISIT, hearing no objections, so ordered. Thank you. Senator Ogden, to close or send it down? So on the motion, then, to send 96 dash 32, without any objection, so ordered. Thank you. Vice Speaker, on 26 dash 32?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move Bill 26 dash 32, as substituted by the Committee on General Governmental Operations and Cultural Affairs, third reading, fine.
Okay, I got a copy of the substituted, yes. So...
And I'd like an opportunity to speak.
So a motion, then, to accept the...
A motion to accept the substitute version and move it to third reading.
So a motion to accept, without any objections, so ordered. And motion, then, for third reading, and you'd like to speak on it.
Please, thank you. Madam Speaker, you'll note that I provided each one of you two copies, one with the substitution, and one is actually, I guess one would call the engrossed of 26 with the amendments. And, and the reason why I did that was so that many of you might ask, what were the changes that were made? And if you look at the, the one without the substitution in the title... You'll see where legal counsel has recommended that I make amendments to the bill. And rather than make three different amendments, I thought it would be more efficient to just substitute the bill in committee and, and report it out that way. Bill 26 was heard, there was very little comment on it, though I did get visits from publishers of a couple of, of both of the print media. And, but the reason, Madam Speaker, that I introduced this piece of legislation was twofold. We here in the legislature's chair, chairpersons of our committee, several years ago, realized that the open government law did not require us to purchase advertisements in the newspaper for, for our hearings. And I believe we got legal counsel to write a, an opinion that stated that, though there are a couple of chairs who still do follow and insist that, that publication, that they would like to have published notices in, in the newspaper. Many of us, for the last several years, have been just sending to the, to the media in last emails, the fact that we are having public hearings. Fortunately, or unfortunately, in the executive branch, there is a belief that you have to publish an ad and pay for an ad in the, in the papers. And after review of the open government law, there, there is no requirement of a purchased ad of any size for, for this purpose. Unfortunately, also in the executive branch, many agencies, many of the commissions, believing that they have to provide or pay for ads, have had to actually pass the hat at board meetings to raise money to, to pay for the ads. I was at the market last Sunday and ran into the chairperson of one of the, one of the commissions, who told me that, well, was asking what happened to Bill 26, and reminded me that she has had on occasion to actually pay with her own credit card and not get reimbursed, the cost of purchasing an ad, just so that the, the board that she chairs can, can meet. I've had board members come to me and say that they are really upset about the fact that this misunderstanding about how much notice and, and what notice needs to be out has really cost them some money, not only from their own pocket of having to donate, to contribute to the, to the purchase of the ads out of their own pockets, but more importantly, many of them are, are hard-working individuals outside with billable time for their, for their efforts, and when they have to attend meetings, cancel appointments and require that, you know, I mean, set aside several hours of a day to these boards and commission meetings, only to come to the board and commission meeting and find out that the ad was not purchased in time, and the 60-hour, I mean, the five-day or the 48-hour notice was, was not, had not been met, and the board could not move forward. Or at least, that's what they believed. Earlier this year, we established a Bureau of Information Technology within the Department of Administration. I know many of us, many of you had problems with, with that still staying within Department of Administration. So you'll note that even the substitute bill still has the authority given to Department of Administration and to oversee this, though it really, I'd be open to have somebody making a motion, a motion to amend it to it going to be IT directly. And I also know, and have been informed, that there is a government website called calendar.gov dot Guam, calendar.gov dot GU. And I see them laughing. It's GU, so I said, gov dot GU, you know? It's not spelling out Guam, it's G-O-V dot G-U. So there, there is a website that has calendar... So in this piece of legislation, Bill 26, it just establishes that there's going to be a Guam public notice website. And whatever that website is, it could be calendar.gov dot G-U, or whatever, that this website would be the site on which all boards and commissions would send in their, their five-day notice and their 48-hour notice, and the webmaster would keep accounts of that, would get it up on a timely basis. It would also mean that there would be one, one website for, which everybody can go to. Right now, you can go to the legislative website, and sometimes you'll see what we're planning on doing, but you'll have to go to different other websites to be able to see what government agencies are having hearings. You can go to their own, if you know that the port's having a meeting, you can go to their website. If you're, if that's what you're interested in, you go to the port website, and you'll look and see when their hearing is, or the AB Wampat International Airport, you can go to their website and see what's, what's happening. But what I was hoping to establish would be one central website that everybody feeds in, and it gets published, and you can just go to that one website, and you'll know. That you look, one, you can go and search it by department, two, you can search it by date, you can even ask to be sent ticklers that, that these notices are going out, but there's going to be one website within which, I mean, with, to which you should be able to go to, to determine if and when anybody is having a hearing, and you'll be able to note who in five days is having a hearing, a meeting, or who in 48 hours will be having a meeting, because it'll be prominently displayed on this website. Right now, it's a hit or miss. If you didn't pick up the paper on any given day, you may or may not know that a hearing is being conducted. You, you might have gone on the legislative website to find out that there's a hearing tomorrow afternoon, you might not have, but if you go to this central website, you will know that tomorrow afternoon at noon, there's going to be a hearing here on Bill 20, which one may not know if one didn't know to go to certain websites to, to make that determination. So this is an effort to try to make sure that everybody out there has one place that they can go to directly. But like members of the legislature, this does not preclude you, any department who feels that they, they need to, to do a publication, does not preclude them from publishing, in the same way that at least one chair of one of the committees here in the legislature does purchase ads. The rest of us do not, at least, I, I don't, I don't have a budget for it, but I get, I get the media to, to cover the fact that my committee is having certain hearings. And some of the other chairs call in in the morning to the radio stations to make sure that there's coverage of the hearing that they're having at nine or 10 o'clock that morning, or two in the afternoon, or five. And that's the way that some of us do it, because we just don't have the budget to be able to, to purchase, purchase ads on a regular basis. And even this law does not preclude it. We just add as a third option besides sending it to the print media, you can send it to the electronic media, and you can do it digitally on, on a website. And so that's, that's the addition. There's the amendment at the end where we add electronic publication on the Guam public news notice website, which in the public notice section, in section two, says newspaper, general circulation, radio, TV, and then add the, as a, the addition, the electronic publication on the public notice website. And then also to make sure that those of us that have cable access channels are required to also publish notices of, of hearing, so that on our website, there should be a way that, besides showing pictures of what we do, that there should be flip charts to make sure that if there's, if any of the boards and commissions wishes to have their notices for their, for their meetings published, put out there in the public domain, that they could use the public access channel that, that is available to us, and we've got to provide them with that opportunity, so that, so that there are certain places that people can go to, that they have access to. And I think we've covered everything in, in both of those, in having the, the public access new, channel, electronic publication on, on a website. We still have the newspapers and the television stations, to make sure that people out there know when we or any board and commission is, is meeting, and that we finally come into the 21st century in, in the ways that we get the word out to the public about our meetings. And so that... And so that, Madam Speaker, is Bill 26 in a nutshell. And I apologize for the fact that I had to give you two, but I just didn't want too many questions raised as to what did you amend out of the original 26? And so I provided you with the strike throughs and the underlines improving Bill 26 and then provided you a copy of the substituted without the lines under it. All right? Thank you.
On the motion, Senator Yamashita.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for allowing me the opportunity to speak on Bill number 26-32. Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of this measure. I think it widens the net of how we get the word out about what we are doing, about the processes. It becomes friendlier to different generations, to the way life has evolved to today. I'm very glad that we continue to keep the newspaper as an opportunity and the word "and" says that we also, and so many of us were visited by the publishers. And for me, a point of interest was the number of our seniors who buy newspapers and read the newspaper. And for me, that was like, you know, that's true. That's a very important part of their day. They get the newspaper, they enjoy their cup of coffee with their pescuccio and they read about what's going on. And so for me, I'm glad to see that that's there. I heard the author of this measure say that he was open to amendment to who would be responsible for overseeing the Guam Public Notice website. And I do think, well, actually, the Bureau of Information Technology was already in place, I believe, but the law that we passed pulled together all the technology aspects of different agencies and said that they could be a part of the Bureau of Information Technology, if I remember correctly. So an amendment that I'm offering, Madam Speaker, if it makes sense, and I look forward to hearing what others are thinking, is that wherever it says Department of Administration, Department of Administration, it might be more efficient if it says administered by the Bureau of Information Technology and that since they are the ones with the expertise in technology, they'll be the ones to create, to oversee, to support, to maintain. And I think there's like four different places where Department of Administration is printed throughout the measure, Madam Speaker. So that's a first amendment that I offer.
On the amendment that wherever it is listed, Department of Administration, that it be then replaced with, let me see, the Bureau of Technology, Information Technology. What is it, what's it called? Can we get the? Yes, okay.
Madam Speaker, it's just been brought to my attention that that name was changed to Office of Information Technology. However, the question I raise is this, is that actually in effect? I know what we passed, but I am not certain that that has been transformed.
Why don't we take a brief recess, then we can also talk to the author of that bill and get some clarification. Brief recess.
This last, I want to say a week or two, a couple of weeks ago. And when we talked about putting this resolution to the floor, someone said, you know, it was noted that there probably wasn't even a need because they're already looking at that options. But you yourself, Madam Speaker, shared a concept that as we look at technology changing, as we look at going green, as we look at fuel efficiency, as we look at making sure that what, making sure that what was done in the past and what was changed can maybe come back to full fruition. And truly realizing the concepts of what was built in the past being built today can probably bring a lot of savings to our residents who want to provide a home for their family. We all know, Madam Speaker, that today with our finances being tight, with the financial crisis going on, not just within our community, but even with our own households, things are getting expensive. We have everything rising on us. I don't know. I looked at my power bill and I was shocked at the fact that my power bill is ginormous. Ginormous now. What I used to be paying four or 500 has now doubled. And it is important that we take the time to revisit, to revisit concepts, to look at new technologies, to look at recycled materials, to look at providing a family friendlier concept. But more importantly, Madam Speaker, is to bring what local insurers to the table to revisit, trying to ensure these kind of homes. I do know that based on what has happened in the past with, you know, we all know that Guam is always ready and resilient when it comes to our typhoons. But I do know that in the past, we used, when a house was blown down or taken away from a typhoon, we had some help from Uncle Sam. FEMA came in and said, okay, you know, we'll help you cover this time. But if you don't make your house, build your house out of cement, then we may not give you a second chance. If a typhoon were to hit again, if an earthquake were to hit again, or, you know, if a structure were to be damaged through natural causes. And so came to play that insurances look at insuring homes that are built if they met those specifications. But Madam Speaker, the reality is today that we need to think about saving our environment. We need to think about protecting what materials and what products that we have here. We need to look at products that will save the environment and not take away from it. We need to look at saving, how they would save, the kids would save, the ozone layers of the earth. And as I smirk here with the gist of smiling here, and as I said that, I want to say that the real thing is we, sometimes we can come full circle in this evolution of life. And the way we, the way our great-grandparents used to live and what we thought was modern and cool today, that technology that was used 50, 60, 100 years, 1,000 years ago is probably much better than the technology that we're using today. And I really wasn't exaggerating when we said the houses that we built today are literally like oven houses. And when we look at the concepts that are out there and the savings that our people could have, one of the impediments to that, to having those kind of houses and those structures made again to the way they used to, the way they remember it back when their grandparents, when they used to live with their grandparents, the way, or the way they used to live with their parents, that impediment, that true impediment is getting that structure or that home insured. And what better way, as we look at a greener, cleaner, healthier Guam, that we take the time to look at this concept? Earlier, we spoke about the housing measure. There was talks about, just based on the surveys done by GURA, by 2020, 6,000 homes are going to be needed. By 2030, an additional 7,000 homes are going to be needed. And with the cost of houses rising, the cost of material, the cost of labor, the cost of construction, the cost of cement, this is a good time to revisit, to revisit the products that we have today. So, Madam Speaker, I, as I look at this resolution, and I know it's just a resolution, but I think the bigger picture is looking how else, what we could do here to provide alternatives to building sound homes, greener homes, few efficient homes, energy-saving homes through other materials than what is insurable today by looking at all the products that we have and what we can get and what that we can capture to be able to realize some savings and some costs on cost construction, but more importantly, to be safer to the environment. So I ask that my colleagues please help me support this resolution. I did note that in the, Madam Speaker, I did note that in the resolve clause that if this resolution were to be passed by my colleagues, it asks that a copy be given to the governor, that the copies thereafter be transmitted to the office of the governor. But I think more importantly, if I could add, that copies be transmitted to the, to our non-voting representative congressional delegate, Madeleine Zibardalyu, also to the Affordable Housing Coordinating Council, to the housing entities within the government of Guam, which is Guam Housing and GURA, to the Realtors Association of Guam, and to...
Senator, can you make, yes, can you make the list? I was chuckling because I was reading the resolution and you did say copies of the same be transmitted to...
The governor.
Blank, blank, besides the governor. But I mean, you listed others, so can we get a list of the others?
Okay, if you can give me a minute, I'll go ahead and write it down.
Sure, we'll take a brief recess. Back in session, Senator Munir Barnes. You have a motion and a list.
Thank you. I do have a motion. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
An amendment.
I did, we did have a list of members that, I mean, folks and agencies that we'd like to extend the resolution to. The clerk has it. I could never, the Affordable Housing Coordinating Council, the Contractors License Board, Guam Housing Corporation, GURA, Department of Public Works, Department of Land Management, the Guam Realtors Association.
Yes, insurance companies, POs.
And the insurance companies.
Okay, yes.
And the Contractors License Board, if I didn't say that.
On that amendment, without any objections, so ordered.
Sign the motion, Madam Speaker.
And through Senators, on the motion then to send Resolution 83-32 to the Third Reading File, without any objections, so ordered. The other bill that we want to hear, I understand that members from Public Health are here, but we're going to take a brief recess until Senator Rodriguez comes in. I understand that there's more work to be done on the 42, Bill 42, that's been set aside, so we would recess until tomorrow morning at 9:00.